She's on your shirt, Justin.
The United States of America, the true love of which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh, we'll go with the best part.
Alright, so she's here, completed and certified, I mean, it's online and I think the way that I didn't want it. So, still to hear back from her. Um, the standard volume in Frankworth, uh, I've heard in the service for it, would be, they're not in the office, because they're not everything in the office, because everything is, but the common month and everything. Um, we had a tower served at the Wells, it's not out of control, well, and, uh, something working with, it's bringing our mess, and then they sent me to, uh, drivers and some of the, uh, yeah. Supposed to be a marine, and then I thought, uh, it's either not the under equipment or, uh, put the power here or another, it's a different thing, we've got the, uh, we're going for the equipment and the, uh, they say, uh, to, uh, about dollars, but the damage estimate is eighteen six. Eighteen seven, eighteen six, um, it's about eighteen seven. Uh, and then, seven thirty last night, there's one way to do a transducer, a tower, to put it working, I called that guy, and he's like, well, you might want to make it for four hundred dollars, or might want to bang bomb for about twenty-six. So, he said that they're late, they're bang-bomb, so, we'll try that twenty-six dollars, we said, we've been using them, and it works. Not much to get there.
Yeah.
Uh, I wonder if those kind of cut himself out a little bit there. Uh, over the weekend, Aaron's over there walking around, you guys have any luck?
No.
Well, I'm not sure, I see they're doing it.
Yeah.
I'm going this week, uh, they make the movie start tomorrow. I got something, okay. But they're just going around and trying to get the, the service line, you know, interviewing people, and looking to get a third percentage of down for legitimately confident, I'm good. Basically, it's an average, law of averages there, if the bottom. She originally said, how do we run, so I felt that and that, and then Aaron said that she said, ten percent, ten percent of the system, ten percent of the system, we're going to go with that, and then try to get the, let service line inventory satisfied. Now, um, the, the thing, this is the end of the year, uh, by the, the end of the year, if you don't, if you have anything unknown, you'll have to send out a letter. So, I mean, you're twenty-two seventy, I think that's a deadline there, but we're just trying to keep the count from happening, spending the, all my dollars, and then send another letter out to people who's not going to fill out a letter, you know, so, just trying to, I think that. Um, bits for the water plant person that ran, I think, if you guys will get, if you did that again, you can see what happens, so, you guys know that. That's all I got on the water, dude, have any questions on the water test? For the water test, I do a west, and then down the cleaning camera, uh, several thousand people, like I feel, on one of the weeks, we estimated a big nine, and, uh, the, Aaron, I don't know what exactly, but, uh, but, uh, a good portion of the system is two miles, so, as we go over to, uh, the line, how many guys are probably going to be, uh, a little bit of money, we do that, and then come back, and pull it out, and sort of line it up, and, uh, but it is the same thing, the camera and the, the cleaning kind of begun regardless of the, if you do the lining or not, if you decided to do the lining, the camera, the, uh, if we had like three and a half, we'd bring it in, so, we had, uh, with that free account, uh, US construction, we, we had a sitting last night, so, Joe called me, and I was like, there was, you know, a couple of, uh, showing up, and, uh, I think that one was, and then, um, letter to the violations, uh, sent, driving, and what we plan on it, and it's just, well, maybe, uh, maybe before we're on, you know, reducing, you know, the concentration of the water systems, and, uh, um, did have a, a, I missed that one, it was way more violent than last weekend, uh, a whole person I forgot to check it, so, I'm calling, uh, three, uh, I guess, experience, but, uh, that's what we got in charge of, so, I don't know if that could be a re-appearance, and then, and then, uh, we did change two quotes in the main station, and they were faltering, and I think that, uh, the alarm quote is now faltering again in the main station, it was going off, and it was about four feet, so, no reason for it to go off, so, it should have turned off, but, yeah, and that's why I'm down, but I think that, the mercury's switching side of the, the quote, sticking, um, changing it up, so.
Get a chance to look at that check knob?
Um, no, we went down there and, uh, we got, opened up a check knob, yeah, because it's off, but, yeah, we, we need to, the quotes, so, I'm going to, uh, yeah, uh, but, yeah, I can see where it's reset directly, it's one across the road, so, you get, it's more to loot, and go back in, and, uh, maybe you can clear it out, or, uh, I do see.
I think, uh, I think it's like, it's like thirty-five, hundred and four thousand, doesn't come in, over this case, and, uh, I don't know, it was kind of coming in, but, uh.
You want to start, Christine?
So, congratulations, you guys got your, right in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so, that's what I'm here, probably really bad, I have the reward at ninety thousand, your match is about ten thousand, well, yeah, they got that, every track, that has a technical, one, twenty-six, so, if you wasn't aware of that, then, uh, um, the award was sent, uh, Aaron, would you receive fully yet? Okay, we didn't hear anything back from them, so, I'm just here to give you the change, okay? Alright, I'll follow up tomorrow, when I get that going, um, in the time, um, the award, typical hazard order, responds to everything, typical, like, like, chocolate, claims, awful words, uh, you know, you know, brush, all of those, uh, your civil rights, you know, and your, oh, that's, nothing odd, that I notice. Um, Oprah has a, a best map for you guys, and that also that, right, and, uh, so, as soon as you get to the award sign, and they say everyone's good, we can ask for, um, actually, we can ask for, but then we can sign, we can rest, um, you can't sign unless, until we have that Oprah approval, so, we'll be, but, they're aware of it, and they're working on a draft agreement for us now, so, you know, we're still working, okay, let's see here, so, I suggest, it's probably a week and a half, I believe, okay? Um, what's that? We, uh, we'd like to post some answers, let everybody know, or, maybe that, or, if you guys are ready for that, and if you'd be, uh, helping that means, uh, I guess, that, and western, we're doing one, yeah, so, we know that, in western, that's complete, if you, channel, information, their lining, and those, if you guys have, and, of course, I said that more, um, I suggest, um, you establish a, uh, first community, um, we want to have, uh, I, 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 that can help, and western, and, um, you guys on, uh, so, it's one of the requirements, you have to have those. Uh, I do want to mention that you guys, I, it was amazing, when we did this survey, the, uh, we, we asked people, and that's great, so, I just thought, here's your dashboard, it comes on the, the ask door, so, if you want, uh, answer, what I'd be, was use this information, we have two questionnaires that I'd like this information for, one was, how do you like to receive updates, or, no, and participate? So, we asked people how will you be most comfortable, whether you need email, or, have these, so, there's my, is there, I'd like to use, as well as, we can ask anybody that is interested in joining a, advice, and, uh, that's, okay, awesome. So, other than that, and how to keep that lights happening, uh, so, Oprah likes to have it completed by March, like, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-six, once that's submitted, they'll look it over, and they'll say, yeah, everything, you have, you know, changes, they want, they'll come back and western, will have some changes, but we have to have final, uh, excuse me, final, yeah, approved, uh, to, okay? So, once they get their formal approval, we'll do a second, and you guys find the resolution, and that's just the way it is, maybe, two questions, you know? All right, well, let's say you have any, uh, sign, or, Adam, or Adam and, okay, alright, uh, I got my, uh, um, we are, uh, so, and, one other thing, if you have, take one, sorry. Right, um, about, um, EDA disaster, and I, that's available for self-account, and self-account communities, um, we have meeting with some of the, uh, officials, and, one of them, she suggested that maybe the project, that, you know, the program, is, I, it's, maybe a good project for this, so, if you guys are interested, if you want, we have a meeting, we got an EAGR, on Thursday, it's virtual, I mean, you guys, one of our, so, okay? So, if you guys, if you want to, I'll send them, uh, advice, and, uh, just send a lot, okay, I'll send a lot, okay, and then that, I can talk more, and you'll discuss more about what is, uh, hopefully, you have, um, yeah, that's, one of those, one of those, yeah. That's construction, it's like, I was assuming construction. I'd really like to see something you can do, you tell them, that you do, I think you guys might be closest, you have a lot of design, and all of that stuff, pretty much sealed up, so, you're gonna say, ooh, uh, we're not ready to do this, you might have to verify some information, but, so, I'll see, yeah. I'll turn it over, can you hear him, yes, please, yeah, that way I can, you know, have to, uh.
Yeah, thank you, John, for the good western years, uh, Kevin and I, we had a, a very busy, that meeting, and you was down, you could, you could not make it, so, it's a line of time, uh, thanks again for responding, this has been a long time since we went through PBS process on this, and other places have changed, and, uh, Mark, and his, very glad, you worked for Shelby for a very long time, uh, both that and Martin, uh, Oprah, as she pointed out, is a bit of a moving target, I think, they have, change processes, uh, they require new things all the time, so, obviously, the, the, and, and, one of the things we have to do this time, which is really interesting, is give them a forecast, as to which buckets, that you can have a good planning, uh, that, you know, a thousand dollar cost, or, if you can take care of this, um, we have to kind of forecast, which buckets we're putting out in dimension, or, or where we're going to spend those funds, how much other than we, we spent on data collection, spending with the new system, how much is we going to spend on the public foundation piece, how much is going to be spent on, uh, you know, just, uh, applying the technical stuff to, to get a, some alternatives, and, for, so, we have to kind of give them an early estimate, there, that could proceed, uh, that can change. What's really interesting about this, having a three D tour of the study, is it's not necessarily requiring those funds be split, you know, over, uh, for, uh, as your survey showed, uh, citizens, at least, have water, and showing their bigger areas, that we need to, take some time, like, I did this plan on, um, however, sewer is, uh, is something that is very much a concern, as we're, it's a fine line, and watching things, the, the, the capture, uh, you can spend a lot of money, you know, uh, you can spend more than what you have, in, for, in, in sewer alone, just to televise, clean, televise lines, to know the shape of it, so you know which lines potentially need, uh, three D plus line, or, or whether or not you put that effort into, say, a, uh, equalization basin, that you don't have to plant, that just kind of manages and stores that stormwater, so it can be fed through the plant at a slower rate, on a day when it's not ready, it's a, it's one of the problems, uh, so, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of moving parts, and we have, we have a lot of flexibility. So, between now and the time we have to pursue, what we would like to, I can take some information tonight, but we plan on having a very good, uh, kickoff, and, uh, and that probably needs to be with the council, we do have a public work session, if you will, uh, we schedule it, whatever time it looks for you, depending soon as everybody's off work, wouldn't necessarily have to be, you know, six or seven o'clock, maybe, it could be four, or if there's something like that, we can arrange that, plan about a two-hour walk, and go through, and gain, set up a communications plan for the project, and who's going to lead, who's going to be the spokesperson, all of those kinds of things, talk about the ins and outs, that's the, that we can be there, talk about the ins and outs of each, of each of these facilities, uh, and talk about, uh, where is there our energy, and this, I know that we've got a lot of things that we've talked about for many years, uh, um, you know, whether we're going to go in between, smoke testing, whether or not, uh, one time we talked about well fluid appearance, we talked about another well, we talked about general, we talked about a lot of things out there that help you, uh, run, you know, your controls, and your status system, those types of things, the tanks to a point that probably needs looked at, and the restriction, protection, um, so, just, just put it all on the table, we'll, we'll have a checklist, we'll walk through each utility, uh, over all pieces, and where are you, your local knowledge takes us, but the other thing we've talked about, as Christine's pointed out, is the public engagement, setting up that utility infrastructure, for advisory committees, that Oprah wants to see, and, uh, obviously, your, your survey, there's a really good results, as far as, uh, actually, what it means, what it may look like, uh, so, I think that first meeting is with council to set up, uh, and talk about how that public engagement piece should be set up, and how you can go to include, in a meaningful way, in, in, and I'm going to help with that, Christine, since she's developed with that, that it's kind of, uh, so we'll have the engineers working with technical side, and we'll work on the PR side as well, and Mary, she'd be able to, hopefully, give you the follow-up.
Yeah.
So, um, you don't have to answer those questions now, but, uh, it's just going to be interesting to see whether, you know, we end up spending, you know, sixty percent of the effort on water, and thirty percent on sewer, and, you know, you know, ten percent on stormwater, so, uh, all three are going to have check boxes that we have to check, there's going to be, certainly, information that has to be in your recorder, and people are afraid to be, 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 um, uh, one of the things that I like to look at personally, and James, is, is on stormwater side, uh, one of the best assets you have at, in, in, uh, stormwater, is actually the human crossing program, and looking at ways to come up with stormwater projects that makes sense, that can be included in your, in your, in your, uh, your, human crossing projects. So, uh, infrastructure that goes along the stormwater, that is literally a team of transportation, hopefully, you can kind of get conscious of things that you can then pursue, uh, from the end, I expect, even have them paid, so, I don't know how you pursue it, uh, for a long term, and maybe have a list that you, that you systematically, you may not take care of it, in a big stormwater project, where you're real involved, but, maybe you can be fair, you know, to, 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 but, usually, that's, that's how I'm really passionate about, I think, it's a good program, uh, there are changes to the CCNG program, uh, that, uh, which I'm sure you know, a lot of what we need, uh, because of legislative changes, uh, if the solid has ever had a look back, so, they, they, okay, then you're in good shape there, uh, some, some counties, only, I think, just under Africa, they actually have, so, uh, since solid has that, we're going to be entitled to, like, this extra distribution, so, nobody's bothering us, so, you can, uh, for extra CCNG funding, in the future, uh, but it's interesting, because that needs to actually be deducted from what we're actually doing, so, moving parts over, uh, you try to stay with that, but, we're here to make talk about, I'll, if anything, you guys have to talk about now, start priorities, it would help me, you know, kind of set up a, a, or, or, uh, which we hope to have, and, uh, probably, label, some, you know, if you are.
Yeah, it's a long way over, yeah, just finding where all the, extra water coming in, and, and, uh, coming out, streaming, system, everything, especially, when you're getting, you're going to televise, uh, eleven and a half, a thousand feet, somewhere in there, last one, so, we, we didn't knock, but, but, two, two miles worth of, uh, so, we got that, so, we got that, so, we might be able to, uh, so.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, that's not something we, you said, we can't touch, which I think is, you know.
We have to pick a little bit off on that side.
And I know, and I know you have planned those, for a while, that's a, that's a, so, we're going to know where, where those are, so, naturally, thinking, yeah, maybe. So we're willing to know where those are, so naturally thinking of maybe. But that's just, that's not going to be your game plan, and I, it's a miracle, very powerful checklist to have, have a kickoff meeting. Talk about everything we need to look at, where we need to spend our time, and then, and then talk about how we formulate how we. Well, it can't happen until we get the notice to proceed, so.
Mid August says.
It's just going to, mid August is probably the notice to proceed. So probably, we can probably look for, you know, the end of August for kickoff meeting. In fact, you can go ahead and maybe send some dates to, to you that are just after, you would go in the calendar date at the end of August. And, and then, if for some reason you need to delay it because Christine's delayed, then we could, then we could use to delay that. Is there a date a week that works best?
I've got Monday.
So Monday, Monday afternoon, I mean, what, what's the earliest today? So Monday afternoon at four? Maybe that, maybe the last Monday of August?
Does that conflict with?
August twenty fifth. And I put time to be determined.
Yeah, I know, I know what I'm trying to do, it's true, and I have all, I have my suggestion for a meeting. I'm just trying to make a conclusion, but one thing, those storms need a day. And we need a problem, you know, in the new office, probably have two hours, but just to walk through each piece, each piece. So.
I have to go up there for you now.
You can go wherever, I think I mean, every day. Yeah. So you would either probably, or someone will show that, since Sheldon, it's a workshop, so it's not. You could actually analyze the state, you can tell that part, there's no decision, it's just an information session, a work session. So you would, you would be able to take it close to, you know, where. Let's all confirm that you, that, that, that we're absolutely good with that meeting.
I think also that's what we said.
Yeah, so that's, that's very important. First, do you see the email and check that?
Three months.
All right, you guys have already known me, I've done this a few times, A D S for insurance, and I've spoken more about how this is going. This is a different question to come up throughout the year. I will run through this paper at the end, I'm sure you guys have kind of looked at us, discussed tonight. If, first page we've gone to is just the kind of breakdown of the premium, we start with all the fun stuff first. At the very bottom, you'll see a couple, the main, I guess when I consider the main changes that's happened since the removal of the last year to now, what's being reflected. The one thing that is not reflected on here, because we just got an email today, was about the, the payback. So it was being totally lost, so that one's going to be kind of off here, so the auto away stuff, end up is not a hundred percent right. It'll be a little, uh, a little bit out. Outside of that, I guess a couple things I'll point out is, you may look at it and go, okay, premium wise, yeah, things are up. That's not at normal here over the last couple of years, that's kind of where the market is at whole. However, I will say, this, I consider this kind of one of the better renewals, if you kind of look at several significant items, and I guess the significant ones I would say are areas that I can have seen historically this year. I would say such twenty twenty that have turned it up property. Obviously, in our area, storms have kind of done, and this isn't just a solid accounting thing, this is in the central, southern Indiana, or just state, state, and then the greater Midwest. We've had some of our storms, and then obviously, we get some of our storms, I mean, if you have a bunch of flames now, that doesn't necessarily affect your town, but you look at the big picture, that's kind of where insurance is, and you are looking at the big picture. That has obviously turned things up. To see that go down is, to me, a very big positive. Hopefully that means that we're kind of heading in the right direction. You're in the early, a little less significant, but actually it's down. You kind of go through here, you see, which you know why it will be down. A lot of things that we would be used to seeing head up, kind of going down. Now, what I will point out on here is a couple of the outliers, which is, is, to me, is not necessarily a shocker because we see this all across the municipalities. We have the law enforcement line, obviously, all these races, law enforcement's been a very, very big factor. So what you're seeing is a lot of, you know, as kind of flames come in, they hit whatever, like, so you see some of these law enforcement related flames. If they, if they end up in a jury trial, you're seeing a lot of those citing against law, law. You know, even if, one of the examples I got that's thrown at me, that just kind of sticks in my mind, is you may have a, let's just say, not in this area per se, but I heard specifically, high speed chase starts in Indianapolis. It's going through the different suburbs, you know, Fisher's, nobody's going, whatever, they call in, hey, can you kind of try to help slow this guy down? Spike trip, whatever. You know, it doesn't work, person gets around, heads on to the next town, or next couple towns, gets into an accident, maybe goes flying. That, those responding police departments were, they had nothing to do with it, they didn't start up their jurisdiction, but they were involved in it in some manner. It'll be cited, you know, they'll get cited against, because something like that happens every once, going to be a name in a situation like that. They end up paying out twenty one, it's like, they really could have anything to do with it, I guess, in my opinion. But those are the types of things we're seeing now, and we're seeing what they would call nuclear verdicts, where it's just, hey, like, it's, it's like a new standard is being said. It's like, oh, they, you know, they awarded X amount of dollars, you know, to this person based on whatever it was. So what they're seeing on the insurance and things is law enforcement companies paying out more than what they typically would have. I mean, historically, if you went back ten, fifteen, twenty years, they're just getting angered on that end of things. So what we're seeing is usually in municipalities that have law enforcement, to varying degrees. Obviously, what Sheldon has going on is different than maybe what San Francisco Terre Haute has going on, or what, what is going on in county. But we're seeing them getting stung on all the, like, this is becoming one of those issues. So that kind of being outlier is kind of where, if like, you take that out, and then you also have your excess liability, you're seeing that as the other one that is higher. Your excess liability is going over, law enforcement's going over, general liability's going over, auto liability. When you have those, those are all backed around to whether that excess or under our liability goes up or down. I think if you kind of took those two out of the equation, being outliers, to me, this is very variable. Just seeing all those owners that were, we've been seeing go up over the last several years, those actually come down. So just rolling through the next set of pages, you know, what we normally do from here to here is your property values, or, you know, building limits, contents limits, those are set to go up four percent for each, you know, adding to. Try and keep a hedge on inflation, as long as you are. So we've seen that kind of come through here. We do still have, you know, birthright coverage, five million is the kind of cap that they put on it. The thing to keep in mind for a birthright claim is it would be a fifty thousand dollar deductible, whereas kind of like Dustin mentioned earlier, you know, the, oh, we have the, thanks to power surge, yeah. So I think the biggest thing there is, are they calling, is it going to be considered a equipment breakdown, or a power surge claim? Or could it have a point to like, well, this happened by lightning? So if it's, if they do consider it lightning coming, then it's five thousand dollars, well, that's a part of, you know, wind or hail, fire, things of that nature. Whereas the equipment breakdown is that amount, the ductible. The ductibles, I'll say, we're seeing them have a lot of work anymore, it's, you know, if you have a lot, say, a lot of other related claims, especially if it's on the wind hail, certain companies are starting to go on separate, and it's not, it's not a hundred percent all the way across the board, where everybody's getting treated similarly. I've got, I've got a town that's got a fifty thousand dollar windmill double. I've got a commercial account, not municipal, where they've got a one percent in the double double, which when you look at, what that's based off is one percent of their building value. Well, it's nine million plus dollars really, so it's ninety thousand dollars windmill double there. So companies, they're seeing what's happening with these storms, they're looking at the predictive model. The predictive model is showing, it's not going to necessarily slow down with us having, you know, severe air weather. So they're trying to account for some of these things, and maybe kind of make the threats a little bit. And some of that comes from, well, we're looking at premium versus, or we're looking at the ductible changes. So, you know, I, I, I'm thankful that we don't have a higher, you know, we don't have a windmill double style here. We've stayed at five thousand dollar double, that we've had a couple of years, so. To me, that's, that's a positive in the grand scheme of things. You roll through the next few pages, it kind of spells out a different location, what there's, you know, what their values are going with. There's too much on there. You go to the next section, it's the primary claims, no real changes there at all. The equipment being the things, we have seen, you know, some additions, so that's increased, equipment values. As far as the ductibles go, your ductible's still at the same thousand dollars that it was. Liability wise, when you look at the different liability sections, you've got general liability, no change. Employee benefits liability, no change. Public officials, law, act liability, no change. Law enforcement limits, no change. Employee practices liability, no change there. The commercial auto, as far as your limits and the different deductibles go, no real changes there. Again, you are going to be deleting the twenty one, should be pay up. So we've got about that today. Going into the excess liability, we're at that five, four million excess, so that goes over the top of your other liability line. So it gives you a total of five million per earnings, which means, let's say, what happens, or what you can use for, in Indiana. Workers comp, no real changes there. I guess I will comment, just based on some conversations that I've had with a couple of you guys. So topic, I think Alex and I can probably originally talk about. As far as board members, what any type of worker's comp, you know, as it has been, the, you know, the Sheldon board has not been covered by workers comp. Now, you know, the two of you are willing to jump in the hole, you know, do what, you know, do what you need to do to help out, so try to, you know, get a water line, you know, fixed, water. So as it stands, you guys are covered by workers comp. Again, so what you, what we, what we have with workers comp as it applies to officer, you know, officers being in the corporation, or board members, you can opt in if you think fully. However, you know, you obviously don't get, you know, a huge salary, you know, get paid a whole lot for what you do for the company, because it's just not your full time, you know, full time job. But with, with the state, they basically set a minimum amount of payroll that if another officer wants to be included in workers comp that way, we have to break you baseball. Even though you don't take that much in actual payroll, that's just the state says we have to break you workers comp. And that's fifty two thousand dollars in payroll that an other officer is given, that's what we have to break you baseball on. So if you guys are not willing to be included in workers comp, it was going to increase, this isn't the exact number, because there's other pieces of the equation that fall into it, but it would roughly be around one thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars to include both. And you could cut that, you could essentially cut that down if only one wanted to. What I would say there is, as we were applying to you guys, if you've got your maltemp, how do you compare our line? It's going to take every minute, so like, if you have to be in the emergency room, you have stitches, surgery, whatever. It's going to pay, you know, whatever it is. My concern for you guys would be, well, it's, yeah, if you guys are losing time at your day job, your, your, or you make your day time pass, this does nothing for you. If you're an employee and you're receiving, you know, a paycheck, and you make X amount of dollars per year, workers comp for your, you know, basically your loss of income, if you can't work because of your injury, workers comp pays two thirds of what those lost wages would be. So that's the part where my concern for you guys is, hey, hey, you wouldn't get any of that, I mean, you might get a small portion of it, if you can't come to, you know, you know, perform your duties here, you know, a board member. So my suggestion would be a couple of things. One, if the town would be interested in offering some sort of like asset policy, where you pick up like maximum policy, or some sort of invisibility policy, we'd love to talk to you more about that. You may have something through your jobs that you might be able to pick up, to come out of your, your, come out of your paychecks every week, or whatever it is. That would be my concern for you guys, is there's no loss of income, so your jobs, what you do at your jobs, if you say break your leg while doing something here, does that keep you from performing your regular job? They may, they may very well have, you know, some sort of lighter work that you could do and fill in time, and you not lose out on any income. But if not, that's something to really strongly consider. I think it's great that you guys want to jump in and help, you know, help wherever it's needed. That would be one thing I guess I would have you guys think about and take into consideration on that end of things. I mean, we can always add you, I don't necessarily have to have an answer tonight, but if you guys want to tackle that, they got a lawyer, they want a lawyer to, and kind of wants to have you guys fill that out, and send it in to them, and then they can get that taken care of. But yeah, what's up, some food for thought there. Uh, but yeah, like some food for thought there, um, you know, what would be covered if something did happen? And, you know, how about freshening, you know, kind of outside of that. Um, outside of that, uh, one other thing that I wanted to throw out there, and this was brought up at a meeting last year. Um, there is the vehicle, uh, that is owned by one of the reserve officers at the town, health insurance. Um, I brought it up at a meeting last year, um, strictly from an insurance standpoint, that does present a potential liability issue. Um, the, the thought is if, say, a plane happened and it wasn't involving, say, children in the kind of business, it's on the policy, the company's going to pay it. They're not exactly about paying it, um, they're not really looking to ensure, say, a vehicle is being used in a personal business. Uh, or if it's being used in some other, like, any manner outside of the kind of business, um, presents a liability issue. Um, there's a good chance that they will, they won't, they won't do stuff in terms of policy like that in the middle of the policy year. But there's a possibility that they're going to, uh, honor it next year around this time. Um, and obviously I, you know, hate to see that, that's obviously can, you know, create some difficulties, you know, on, on the insurance end of things. So, um, like I said, I know it, it's been discussed before, uh, and I guess that would be one thing. I guess I would have you guys consider, um, thinking a little bit further about, um, because it would be fairly significant in the results of it, I guess.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, is the total, is that the total for a week, what are you, if you want to?
It is not the, like I said, we've got to take that one, that one vehicle will be subtracted off of it. It will take it down a little bit, it's not going to be, I don't think it'll be a great deal. I mean, we're probably talking five hundred bucks if I just had to pick a number out of it.
And obviously they might not fully, so they replace the vehicle, so if they choose to replace it, will that change that?
So, so typically, and I, it, it will depend on how, what you're replacing and what the value ends up being. Uh, what you will typically see happening is municipality, when municipality policy when it comes to the auto, is if there is a change that's made during the policy year, typically, not a hundred percent of the time, they don't charge you any additional premium for it until you get around to a new rule next year. Same thing on the other end of the, if you take a vehicle off in the middle of the policy year, you're not going to see any of that. Uh, the caveat that I would say is depending on what the value is, sometimes they will go ahead and charge whatever they want to for anything. Um, but, um, is that something have lined up that you guys have had to purchase or? We're kind of waiting to see if it's going to be a thing.
I just, um, for my question, I just wanted to have to listen to you, and then when you said, uh, will that change it?
I can reach, I'll, I'll be able to meet you with that, obviously. Um, I guess it would be, is there any?
It's on Tuesday, so it'll have trucks.
Oh, okay, yeah, because I think you were saying on the evening, you know, farmer for.
On the day, I'm going to check for it today, uh, and then contact you next week, probably.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the, the, the truck coming off is probably the worst significant, I guess, as far as change, uh, as it applied to this rule. Um, but yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're finding all these trucks, so we'll be at no one here for.
Yeah, so you want your dogs to be, it'd be nice to have a check in your hands, say, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but yeah, we can add it in in time, that's not a problem. So basically, maybe just make sure we get the other off. Um, I guess you guys have any thoughts specifically on workers comp, anything that I explained that, I guess, not, um, yeah, just, you know, you know what you guys want to do. Um, and then I can let you finalize figure. I guess is there anything that I didn't run through or did or didn't run through?
All right, no, you're good. Um, so you said earlier that, um, you found that a pickup truck pretty recent one?
As far as what they've decided to do, whether it was, whether they, hey, we can exhaust the oil records as far as like trying to recover it or anything. Uh, we just got the email that happened, and hey, they just all had to put it off, of course, and send it out and get it taken off of it.
And what was the value of that truck? Because I know it was a truck, and then also what I heard, if this is true, there's a lot of cool stuff that they just, it was a thirty-one thousand dollars in the truck, and, uh, it was a thousand dollar deductible, so thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, we get the various invoices, but the contents, uh, I believe the contents are uncertain now. So almost fifteen thousand dollars. And then, um, I guess local law enforcement, we don't have any means on recovery or anything.
So I'm going to report the file, and we don't have any such stuff. Contact, you know, from a video camera, that is a white male, medium to large build. Um, the, uh, likely claim vehicle itself had been placed in, um, Fox, which is a Karen's, that goes back to the, uh, Indiana. The last time it was seen was on Sunday afternoon, approximately about one-thirty, one-thirty-five P M. I have to get that report sent from him, but right about one-thirty in the afternoon. And Bloomington was the last time I had ever seen, and it hasn't been seen since.
So the truck's last reported, something was in Bloomington.
It was.
Thank you.
Do you, you have a picture of the person that took it?
No, it's not, so you can see like from the clock system as it drives down the road, you can see like the back of the arm, the size of the wear and the ball cap, you can tell it's a white male. And by the size of the arm, it would be medium to large build, but you could tell that it was like a skinny person.
But then nothing, it's, it was like identified with the, yeah.
It's a bad dish.
It's all around, yeah.
No, you can't see it that way.
There isn't cameras by the garage, Matt.
None of them work. On the workers' comp, do they, do you need to have a workers' comp legally?
Legally, no, I mean, basically workers' comp is required to be covered in any case. But whether, whether it's a municipality or if you're a private business, uh, owners' comp are, they could, they could be covered by workers' comp. If they won't, uh, it's, it's up to them. Traditionally, the, the board is always a steward. Um, but, you know, some of the discussions were, hey, you know, help it out, you know, when there's issues. Um, and then it's of, you know, make sure you're second to third. For workers' comps.
Are they required to offer workers' comp, I mentioned to you, which is.
No, it's always kind of like, one, one company, you're not getting it. And it's a lot of that. Questions, concerns, estimation, we have no search for questions. Most of them appreciate you guys' business.
And then, um, you'll see on the A P D, I have an actual invoice, because I, I threw it up, one maybe a little more work. So, again, invoice prepare, um, one thousand seventy, so I need to go through and contract, so if you don't have. Uh, one thousand, one thousand one seventy. And there are orders too, that you guys have to do for that. Um, and then just minutes from last month, and the, um, I would consider, um, to.
Uh, well, we get the five hit the job, I don't, like, it's left out, might come with the service, so we do the groundwork, so. Everybody's okay, all right. We've got a popper, we make them, we got the dashboard, we're, we're checking them, yeah. Running eight last month, not a problem at all. That house screwed up, ground level, and it's all pushing that side of the, backside of the house now. And so we're going to have to go back and add some more, but, but it is, it actually works now, so I guess it will.
It's not, it's not bad. It's all, it's all right, it's all right.
It was, it was draining still, because I think that's just because it got, oh, yeah, four hundred meters. He told me that if you're ready to, it's smaller, it's all, so, the ground is smacking, it's cranking, it's, you know. So, probably talking about like, uh, everywhere.
Yeah.
The three feet.
Three feet?
Three feet of water in the background, ready to take the kayak all the way around your, around your house.
Well, the ground is that, that's funny, they were close enough to.
Yeah, but look, so the backyard of, uh, Billy and Scott's house, it's a lot lower than mine's, or a lot, a lot lower than mine's, right? It's like two or three stories lower than mine's.
Two or three stories?
Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of them, they used to turn all that off when it's used in dirt, or there's something that, um, so, I think that's kind of, I mean, I've, I've had a lot, I mean, you know, the, it doesn't drop like that, it's, um.
How can someone that's tired to be flooded longer than everybody else?
They're in top, so.
There's some conflict.
No, they work right here. I mean, you said, I had a, who made it, I think you're in there.
I mean, that would be water dynamics, all right? There's somewhere it's lower, and, and you got someone that's tired, and this thing's flooded longer than that place.
You're probably, well, it's not that, whoa, bro.
Putting it out somewhere, okay, so it's, it's six, it's six feet, or three feet higher than the road, right? Yeah, it's three feet higher than the, than that road over. So how does my yard stay flooded, longer than everybody else?
My guess is a little bit, I've got it.
My guess is it's running over to another street where it shouldn't be running to. I think, yeah, you go along the streets, it's running the same blood. And it shoots up out of the street right there. You know, well, the thing, you know, the other thing we can do is, well, we look in, uh, the, 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 you know, the stuff. You know, the thing we can really do is go from that corner, on, and make, you know, up the side of the pipe.
Yeah.
We're eight, I'm saying that, is the one that runs behind the, Billy and, that's like a two-foot, top, it's going down that alley. But there's so much stuff that does go through that big school, right, that, that was more, I said, it was just, it's cool. You have a little handle, and it's going, you know, it's, you know. I think this is only like the last year, the last two years.
Uh-huh, not just in that area, bro.
It's been a hard forty-two years. Okay, so what, I'm, I'm straight from my house.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, I'm, 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 you know, I'm, I'm, you know.
I know, it's not yet. Yeah, I'm like, I'm curious. So I'm in a constituency, you guys, for twenty-two years.
Not bad, I'm in it.
Not you guys yet. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see some of the things, so in my case, I might take, uh, clothes and, and shoes, it's cool.
But we haven't worked on it.
There's, there's no way that, that my road being three feet higher than the next road over should, should flood longer than that street.
It's, if you look at drawn away, like, three, probably, I'm guessing, probably six foot difference, and drawn away, you could.
Right, higher.
Not like high.
Yeah. I don't know if it's higher than just next to the door. I guarantee.
Can't you guys put a drain in? Can you put a drain in?
They can't put a drain in a private, on private property.
We can put it out.
No, there's already drains there, on the back, on the back of my property.
They, he would have a easement to his, they, they did that to mine in Sullivan. They put a drain on the easement because my, my yard flooded literally to the door. Every time I had a water drain like this.
Instead of fixing the one that builds.
It's just a suggestion.
There's one in the down the road here, on the back of my road.
But they had it on the, right.
You have it on that one?
They had it on the burning, right.
Not the one on that?
We're talking about, we're here, we're going on the burning, right.
Yeah, I'm fine. That doesn't even make it off my road, that makes it off those old, those roads.
And they would have made it clear down, so. You know, like you made it on my.
I have been that behind, until my reality changes, this is my reality.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's still my reality.
Well, they did work on it.
This, I must have, listen, I'm forty-three years old, that's half my life that I've been living there. And it's never changed since. And it, and it has been addressed.
Uh-huh. And then what?
It's been addressed with you guys. Tell you explicitly, it's been, uh, addressed, yeah.
And they did work on it.
So I understand you're having more drains, you started putting in the slow process, we understand, you're opening that first ring, and then did a, now they're taking the door for the water flow.
It's not always, not they did, uh, so when there's more rocks or water, you're right, there's not a high. Okay, so there used to be, there used to be a ditch down that entire side of the road, okay? Years ago. Across Donald's property, across that way on Donald's property, there used to be a ditch. Across the front of Bill Scott's house, there used to be a ditch across the front of my house. The town was actually years ago filling me. I almost guarantee you go back to my house and dig up, probably, pardon my daughter, right there, you can kind of find cauldrons under my sidewalk, and under my, under my driveway cover.
You sense it's flooded, I mean, it's different than a ditch.
Because the ditch is filled in.
You said it's still flooded.
It's still flooded.
So it flooded from the ditch here, it's flooded from different time.
Because it's going to take it to that corner, corner drain.
It's not making sense, you said from the, I don't get here, if it's flooded, I'm going to move there, so it wouldn't have a drain, man.
Yeah, you got a drain. Those ditches were filled in years ago. Prob, probably about the same time that the old infrastructure got dug up, and a pipe laid over the top, and did, and a pipe laid over the top of that infrastructure. So that raised it up three feet to where it brings, uh, three feet higher, so if you pull the infrastructure down lower, it would probably go lower.
So six foot ditch here.
Anything great in the yard.
Look it over now, okay, and that, okay, maybe a week's all.
Oh, that's all I can do, that's my reality.
Maybe a week's all.
You know, you know, the nice stuff, the nice and all. You know, you know, the nice stuff, the nice little thing that I need to replace before my yard flooded that much. I'm, I'm pretty much gonna, gonna do a property. That's it. I'm gonna up and move, being on my. Yeah, that's kinda crazy. This is my reality now.
Well, sometimes you walk, work across the street. But that, that ditch that was two run. We could go, it's all filled in. Now, if it's been smaller, it wasn't gonna be.
Uh, I'm pretty sure that guy was, it's some kind of car, I don't know.
They're great. About three and a half, three big things on that, that show still.
How many, how many cars were there?
We put another one in the, on the side of the road. And we crossed, Howard for the east, we put a drain in, then we put four in on the west side of Howard, that opens up. And then the one across, making, uh, basically where we tied in that. But it had a relatively new, uh, eight inch long, more, comes in there on the inside of Jefferson. So I had to move all the time. And I, I get what it's something, I always said they just kept putting the new one over the top of the old one, cause soon as we crossed Howard, we, we had three old ones. And that wasn't able to be good. That puts it higher every time. But now what you're draining out of, is higher than what it can take from my property. It just takes it out, both, both small folks right from the property. But not only did you get in front of that, in front of my property, you, that's what you do about it.
The problem, the, 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 without, without the pipe, you're out.
I know, you got, put a culvert under my driveway, put a culvert, which I almost guarantee we dig out the rock that was, that was filled in by the town years and years and years ago. Not, not, I'm not talking about you guys. I'm talking about before you guys, okay? They probably filled that ditch in with rock, and there's probably culverts underneath my sidewalk there, it's probably culverts under my driveway. But, that's probably the way it was running. Because there is a pipe down there on the back path of my property. But it goes straight, it goes straight down, and either it goes into the sewer, into the, the water, wastewater system and goes down. Or it came around the corner there and went down those culverts to go into that drain. And when they, and when they.
Maybe I'll go, we can figure out, and see if we can figure out something. Is that alright?
Yeah.
We'll come up something, plan it.
We'll do a little bit today, just wanna take a little time.
I don't know what you have to do, Eddie. That all you got, Bill?
Hmm?
You all ready, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Mm-hmm. Matt?
That's it.
And just before it's taken to the end.
Got it? Uh, the whole thing I was, uh, we got pump testing coming in in October, I hope, so I'll get all that scheduled and. Four bucks to the term, and then it gets done. Yeah, I think it's in October.
Rebuilding, fine?
I have it now, uh, I don't know if it now, but you've had it, uh, you've done a commission every time. So, I believe it was going to your friends.
Yeah.
So you go, you can go ahead and pick someone, like online, and that was enough applications, so I had five, and probably.
Yeah, it was separate, uh, renovation, and, uh, it was put up for, I don't know, I thought it was a place.
Just it was supposed to, somebody's next, like, come along.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. This is, um, October, as far as you mentioned, be a smaller area. And, uh.
Uh, all new equipment is, like, at the point, not that they're, they're not there, say it.
Now, it was suggested by the installers that we get some sort of barrier, ground cover, by law, but it has to be. We can still, we can use a grass, but by law, it has to have.
So, we're applying the drainage trick for P I, P M, P S, for the, for the park, but it, it looks like rubber and you step on it, it's kind of crunchy.
Yeah.
Uh, but we obviously won't be able to do that until nobody's like, we're gonna, so, so in the meantime, it's possible. So about all these dimensions and the thickness needs to be, I mean, the density of the guy, you know, if you're more close, or if you guys have something, I could place it on the check down.
I have wood chips, true.
Well, it's gotta be, it's gotta be, it's gotta be.
Uh, true.
It's gotta be twelve inches dug down. Then you need six inches of gravel, of peat, gravel, and then a six inches of mulch. So that's all we can. What were, you guys, you guys, mother mops too, or?
I think it's, I think it's rubber.
Yeah, and we don't have those. And so unless you guys wanna pay it all away, uh, I'll try to get a grant.
Matt?
Have you guys, I looked into, um, I'm terrible at remembering, and I hate this, um, right by pick, the, um, the, uh, solid block, pickable entrance. Yeah, so they actually are the only ones that I'm aware of in solid encounter, anywhere around, that actually has a certified wood chip that you can use on a playground, that you can use that. And he's a super nice guy, I bet he would, I can't speak to where he was, but I, I bet he would make it more than worth it to, to locate it at. But he's always been super community oriented on that, and when we ask him for things or whatever, I mean, we're doing, and I do know he's the only one that has a certified wood chip.
Alright, um, we were looking at, at very big, really temporary, most of the builders. Those wood chips have to be changed every moment of years. So, rubber grows every ten years.
Ten years.
Or plus. Well, but, but for now, I mean, mulch would be where we're at. Unless you guys go to go ahead and get loads for the rubber, and we can apply the current that we applied for to the building during period. It, the, 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 I remember too, that was on.
Yeah, we, we, we need to, water.
The building is cracked.
The floor's cracked and sank, and the wall separated from the floor, and then it's got a pit hole gap where the stairs stepping down.
So when it comes to bigger, I mean, the hot work and me, we make what we make, but at the same time, bigger project, bigger infrastructure, and it's, we have to call on you guys.
I wanted to take pictures of all the cracks, uh, from the last week.
Pretty bad. Yeah, it happened, just kind of out of nowhere, I mean, that thing's been a while, it's years, oh, and all of a sudden now it's. You know, you got buzzed.
I think you said then Terry and I was on vacation.
Uh, either way, I know the guy, I would have to be very specific on the width, the half of the front, because they installed a specific, this four of that. And it's like three inches of, of mulch over there, because then the roof sets and the need to. Yeah. Did you guys, did I see the pictures of that building? Yeah.
How do you negotiate back to that? When the drain was, was there any plan to put a sidewalk back to this?
Yes, that's initially had, it's as progressive, it has been, you talked about. Well, you could technically, can have kids on it right now anyways, because there's your mulch down.
That's fine, but I mean, it's gonna be, is it time frame, or when it's from the sidewalk, put back to?
That happened, discussed in the last meeting, we had a part, we haven't had a part for me, because Kevin having listed dates, he couldn't do, and then I went on vacation. We've had lots of things going on.
The, the plan is to have a sidewalk connected from, from, from back, apparently, because I'm pretty shaky, but, and then have a wall compact, the wall compact, the, 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 it goes all the way around the playground, so the wall compact will go to the left of the playground, back around the line, like, and the soup sets up towards that alley, and then back around, so it'd be like, basically, like a, a.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the, the, the plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, I think, I think actually the wall compact is on top, and it goes this kind of, like, they, 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 they. Yeah, the only thing that we have to be careful on, they said, is something to do with, um, where the actual sweep setting is, is, um, the blacktop have to go to the playground, when we have mulch, that's not super anything, but the ones we have, the rubber, so.
Makes it more.
So that's, I'm going with finish.
So, well, yeah, we're gonna decide on the drainage here, which has been, so it would be a lot of, um, we could maybe, um, we could, and you know, we gotta be all the.
I'm just concerned about, like, why someone to get this food, to hang it out.
Oh, I mean, if we're gonna get saved, we're gonna get saved, because the building is gonna fall.
Well, that's, 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 and, and these lines have got, um, oil around it.
And God knows what it'll be.
Here.
No, no.
The sidewalks of the planes funding your support for that was here. For one of the new playground equipment. It was chosen to be put back by Penn Stoll, who stated he confirmed that the kids now the next year don't need playground equipment further back, making more sense, unless she has a kid running out of her car.
Yeah.
It was almost taken advantage.
So...
Another reason why I was put back as well is the original plan, all the playground, we didn't have a budget, so there was a space at our house, and there was a bit of time to go to get additional playgrounds and help add to it, and the whole place, or we put that, or we ran out of it, and this is fine. So in the new place, that whole area is made and had additional, like, numbers.
We've got, we've got plans to get rid of that foot that's there now, because it's unsafe. Um, could, could we look at maybe some area project as a component later to construct the sidewalk? Yeah, I've got a lot on, I've got some ideas on this, but I don't actually have much. Well, I'm just, the reason why I ask is, is that I've seen part of the town, part of the playground, and the park, and it's very, very efficient, very nice, and they have a lot of things, and then they, they have put some money in, uh, they put some money into Y D, and I can give you this contract, and I think you...
When, when people also have their ground around, or something, how, like, does, does it have, seems that it's safe for them?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's probably, you know, it's over there, you fly them off. You might even start it off. I'm just suggesting, it's the same, you might get some, I don't know, and it might not, if they don't want to ask me. Yeah, I'm gonna go to the locker, the school, and yeah. I mean, they need to be more, more active doing that, because you've seen the town to the grass, and the barn, and the water, and, um, they might, you know, yeah, you know, more, you know, you didn't handle all this, um, you know, yeah, but you're starting to see it work. Exactly. All right, that's, that's why, you know, you know. Uh, yeah, I just had a thought, and, and, so, um, what resources is part of it? Because usually you guys get projects.
We're, we're fully funded by Brian from the pound, we're essentially, you know, and you're trying to get, I mean, they don't have, you were calling.
You guys have a barrier of interest.
Excellent. Uh, you have, yeah, I, this stretch of the building, where, I mean, do we broke it off, do we, do we block it off a mile, or do we?
Well, I don't think it will.
Did you see the pictures? Have you seen them?
I would not.
Have you seen them already?
I don't know, I don't, I think, I think I've got, I think, yeah.
Here, just, here, I want to, because, there's that.
Yeah, I can do, uh, uh, yeah, we do our, uh, yeah, we do our, uh, yeah, we do our business. Yeah, we're, 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 initially, we know that storm sewer was collapsed, and we're gonna have to dig it anyway, since we're not digging, and, I mean, I've been messing, and we're trying to build the magic spring, and everything else, and right there.
So then, are we, said, said, uh, before, or, like, there's no, oh, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, we're just doing that, the, 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 uh, uh, uh.
So there's not any, um, uh?
So there's little leaks, but it's all, it can all be lined through there, there's no clamps or anything like that, it's just that, we have, sort of, a little fracture through there, but, uh, pretty well, the whole system's in one piece, uh, there's no, uh, repairs anywhere other than the, 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 starting line, or, 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 whatever.
All right, my second question, this is after my, after you guys, uh, we've got our business, uh, brand since, uh, December twenty twenty, every year, we found a little box, take, uh, five years, we're saying, after we're here, last year, we had a, the vendors, with the town, and one of our vendors, um, they have, right here, and...
I'm, oh, the, 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 uh, we, 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 I'm, 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 I'm,[661.12]
You can fabricate it after all, it's like slick, so like animals can't even, but like, you know, I mean, the water. Cause he's got on the foot and then he'll be a jerk.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Is it not right now?
No.
No, cause that pipe is so big, it keeps it so low. It's only not a lot of water.
They live in the same ditch as this, but when they should have it on for us to put it in it, it's actually so bad it seems like a couple of, well, it just. Drove over.
Just maybe it's something in the water. I received a call from Terry, so Terry, you're gonna be, I think Terry's one of the, I think he ran worse than Terry.
Uh, cause we always had a, we've talked about the, the elbow and then it was just like. Cause then it would easily still, like a storm or whatever on top, you stuff out of it and it would let the water go on.
And you can just give me a number of what the cost to have it all done?
So once you fix that, or should put a hole in there, in the same spot.
Alex has a hole in there over on the, uh, side.
Yeah, I'd, I'd do it right into the ditch that way. It's not flooding, I don't want you to ever, I don't want that to, it's, it's water out and into the creek.
What's that hole in the big water stuff?
Like boring?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I thought they get the boards for the cost of law.
Guy gave me some, look there.
Oh, okay. We'll figure it out. There's a lot of color, someone calls across them for like eight or ten inch border. And hit him with it, and then I can just get a plus on the back of it.
And, uh, update on those training, uh, Jason and, uh, Sean.
I started my week.
Any target did, since you're targeting. That's a little target.
Yeah.
We want that training to be, uh.
Uh, depends on basically how busy we get. Right now, just doing this, we got, I mean, let's just say. Really, as I said, the weather, really. Spend two hours, good way to get a bit of, whenever you have time to come back to it. So it's a three hour course.
Okay, so, so what, what do you think you're gonna, a couple hours a day, a couple two hours a week?
Uh, well, right now, I think Jason's the furthest, but he's got, I think, ten in already.
Okay.
I just got like an hour, cause I just started it, and, um, Sean got three. We started it this week.
Well, let me ask you this, then I'll give you a little question.
So I guess last week we started it this Monday.
But you can, they get done by the end of August.
Okay.
Okay. And then what does that not have a real training certification? What does that affect you exactly from doing it? Cause I've heard about some of this, but.
Basically, uh, hall protection and, uh, can find space, a lot.
Right.
I mean, basically we're still getting homes, but they're gonna be very shallow.
It's a very small hall.
Yeah, so like little store water stuff, we're gonna, I could do that, and then, you know, keep the deep most down. I'm gonna bring me that I have with me, Sean, to, to, but, but it's basically purpose on the.
You guys had to, I've heard this as well, I don't know if it's true. I, I kinda came here like, I'm like, I've heard this from the rumor mill, now I should do this.
Yeah.
So, uh, have you all been subcontracting these jobs out to other people?
Yes.
Okay, I know my marriage had to do that for a while, because they just had so much stuff. How much does that run you per job?
Uh, so far.
We paid money.
A thousand, one hundred and twenty.
We paid, we paid money, a couple thousand, we paid, uh, driver and I, maybe a hundred, because it's serious stuff.
That great, yeah.
Great.
Does it totally, around the living room?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's more. And what form is this coming out of Robert's tree?
On what?
Uh, hold a subcontractor work.
Longer, two.
One, two.
Any other work?
And hold a little bit of, hold it. So.
We're going in and out, man.
I'm gonna do that, new project.
That's all I have, I can't come up with a problem.
And, uh, we're late, it's a late.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that back up on business, to see if he was interested in going forward, just letting it go. I know we'll put the work. Work on the list, he could be saying, run, uh. That's when we draw that, we throw that on her, uh, and listen to it before you keep throwing that on free. Uh, I think it'd be a lot better than what we got now, but I'm, we keep the, the horse, we keep training it up there and running it. So it's up, if you want, if you want to go through with it, uh, let Clarissa know if you want to, if you can, um. But I just wanted to discuss it this week.
Yeah, I mean, I'll think of it, like I said, I don't, both of them work on.
It's just, it would be, this is, if you have some work, if you have some work on your part. I, I don't know, we'll be, once it's up and running, then that would come off, but, uh, it's just, I don't know, she, you know, she's. The court treasurer, I know of that at the tables, and draw that on too, to be longer, so.
What computer guy's up, maybe you want my?
Yeah.
I said, it ain't gonna go fixed, it's up to you guys.
Ask her to get its own muscle. If she don't wanna do it, then we need to call.
I like our, for, for, they can, you guys don't like, we can find it.
I think they can, um, you're willing to take.
Drop some wood, they can, like, you don't like the fire, can you, drive?
If you're willing to re, redesign it, to make it look better, or more efficient, that's really nice. I just like to see it, where the fish is just part of the movie. If you're willing to do that, off, off, some table, a bar, and that, or, or.
James.
If you, if it changes, if it takes six months, I'm not seeing it together.
No, you guys just get, like, if there's something specific, or a list of things that you, you know, don't like, or change, maybe they look.
Okay, alright, let's just do it that way.
I do know, I, I, I'm, it's connected to the town, it's connected to, to the city, like, updating it, and, and. Are you, are you, sorry, you, you can pass, and then watch.
Yeah.
So there are names there, and you're pointing them, you're getting them.
Okay, so. And a little bit, a wee bit. Yeah. Um, I might tie in for, I think, a little new, that I got from her, see, I think, to see. The, uh, sent us a better recommendation, how, uh, the bids were with.
Stable tier, and, and, uh, I'm gonna grab.
So what you got is, you're saying that it was an after the bid, basically, and, uh. Basically. Uh, the older bid, came in the oldest part, for the voluntary, it's what that means is, that's the, the contractor, the good recommendation, it's machine contracting. They put an old bid of using the boring and the old pipe instead of the, trying to shrink the pipe. So that came in at a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred. And if you look at the base bid, it should, it should be cutting, using the existing pipe you got, if you're purchasing the sender, it'd be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty. So we went with the old bid, we can say, uh, forty-two thousand, forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, I reached out to Ron Law until this July, late last week, and they had Ron, with the two of his pipe, take back the pipe, the four inch pipe that we got, C nine. And exchange it for the, uh, boring pipe. He said, he would come in this, we can take a look at it, verify it, he, he couldn't give me yes or no. Now, if he does, then they take that pipe and exchange it, then. Basically, the C recommendation, basically, this, the, 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 they not, the long bids still would be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty, this is a long bid, that the shoe will get, on bids. I'm trying to cut it out, I don't know, I don't, I don't.